We thank you, sir.
We have variances all the time in Chongyin. I just wonder if we should just kind of bring our ordinance a little bit closer into that so we don't have to have all these variances every time. If we're, I can't think of any that he's denied.
Well, look.
What's the first of something, I guess?
Yeah, well, first of all, you, you talking specifically, you talking about setback lines?
Yes.
Specifically, what you've done is you tried to set setback lines at reasonable distance from the property line for several purposes. One, to protect joint neighbors. Two, to make sure that there's drainage. Three, but at the same, at the same time, you have some flexibility with ability to give a variance, but when that is done, the neighbor has an opportunity to express concerns about how, what the variance request is. Sometimes we've had it where, uh, uh, there's utility lines or easements that we have discovered once they have asked to go into setbacks. Sometimes we've had concerns about what drainage will be between the two properties. What we are trying to keep from happening is to encourage builders to use every foot of the property to where they could, driveways side by side. Like you can see in some of our older subdivisions, where they try to use every square foot to save, to save footage on a lot so that they may be able to get an additional block in the subdivision by, by building everything tighter, closer. So what you've done is you said, okay, for this type of subdivision, for this type of zone area, this is a reasonable setback. After extenuating circumstances, they can come up to the council. You can consider why they're making the request. You can ensure there's proper drainage. You're providing proper notice to all of the surrounding neighbors within 200 feet that may have an objection to that. And you're guaranteeing we don't, we don't have to worry about pouring slabs over property lines. The other thing is for every variance that's requested, think of the number of people that never request a variance. So that you have plenty of green space between properties. You don't just have driveway from driveway all are joined, which by the way, for safety reasons, is not a good idea. We want some separation between that. And so, that's the reason for setbacks anyway. I'll add an additional lesson, so you say, okay, two foot. How long do you think it will be if we're going to think people will come in and ask six inches to the property line? I mean, really, and I've, I've gotten facetious, but you can bet. If you say two foot, and I'll give you an example. Swimming pool ordinance. If you recall, the swimming pool ordinance was filled with setbacks. A draft in swimming pool ordinance was submitted. There was a difference of opinion. Y'all worked it out. Y'all said, okay, what is reasonable? You even had some full contract fish. And saying, yeah, that sounds reasonable in terms of how close to the property line. And the reason you did that was because people were pouring swimming pools on the property line. And then when they drained the swimming pool, it would drain onto the adjacent property owners. And we said, no, we can't have that. So you set a, a setback of no closer than 10 foot, which is by the way, different because it's a swimming pool. And, and unless I'm mistaken, after y'all negotiated all that, because the question came up, maybe seven and a half, I said 10. You may be seven and a half, but y'all negotiated. And I asked that question. I said, okay, well, y'all, what happens when someone comes in for a variance request and wants to get it closer to the property line? To five or four. At that time, I think it was Councilman Bear. Said, no, we have negotiated this, we've done what's reasonable. We're not going to be giving variances on our swimming pool setbacks. We're not going to do it. And all of you agreed. Now, that's the message that I take to planning zoning. Now, I mean, but with swimming pools, that's one thing, okay? Because of it, it's unique. It's an excavation, it has water, you know, you can have draining pools. You know, we don't want swimming pool right next to the house for safety reasons. There's all kinds of reasons why you said no variances to that. We've already looked into that, we debated it, we've come up with the fairest, most reasonable ordinance we can. And we're not going to be here from that. Now, when we talk about accessory bills, or when we talk about driveways, you know, those are not as critical in terms of setbacks made in every instance as, say, swimming pools. So you have a little bit of leeway to at least consider. But you have the option when you think that for a particular property, if, when it's not reasonable, should it be drained? Or when you have neighbors like, we have had, we've had neighbors here recently. We had a commercial business, if you recall, the neighbors came in, and what was their concern? Drainage, you remember? Where you got to hear both sides and say, okay, does something have to be done in order to grant this variance? In order to allow them to, to pour within the setback here? That's the reason you, you have ordinances where you have some flexibility to be reasonable. Now, I don't have, I wouldn't say that it would be reasonable to set ordinances and say, we will not consider variances under any circumstances, never, amen, end of story. I'd say, hey, believe me, that's pretty hard. I mean, you could do it, but I'd say, hey, you know, really, you want to do that? At the same time, if you start getting closer to saying, but we grant two feet to the property line most of the time, uh, then that becomes your standard, these chairman's ordinance. And what you're going to hear is, well, look, I'm just talking about six inches more. I'm just talking about a foot more. I mean, and in reality, here's what I'd ask you. If two foot to the property line is okay in every instance as the standard, then what's the big deal if it's six inches closer? Explain it. So, you know, if you want to say, no, never again, no variances, but we're going to let everybody get to two foot, then maybe, but I doubt you really want to do that. And I can promise you, as soon as you do it, every developer is going to do the smart business style. And that is, see how I can push everything line up as close to that property line as I can. That's the best explanation I can give.
Mr. I was just kind of, we get on every, every.
I know. But you have to announce some, some limited instances. But what I say is, at least the neighbor gets to know, or knows some chance to speak before his neighbor, you know, sees how close he can get. It's all about being a neighbor, being reasonable.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
See, I've got anything else? Uh, we've taken about a 10-minute break. Well, then we got one live.
Oh, yeah.
City has lost an operating budget for 50 here at 2025 and 26.
Do we want to do the budget now or later?
You got to have a puff of gin on it.
I'm pretty good on what we do, it's explained now.
Well, it's on the regular agenda of the city.
Okay, I understand, I'm having problems with that. Uh, number one, I want to thank you for allowing me to do it today. You're the last meeting of mine. I've made my, let y'all aware that I'm not going to be here that day. So y'all allowed us to do this today if we could get through. Thank the board that worked it to get through. It'd be a prescientous fair budget if you possibly could ask. In our budget, our, our income is based, when you look at that first page, and everybody's pretty much knowledgeable of this. That's what we run our city on. Sales tax, the franchise fees, permits, numerous amount of income that comes there. So you can't, you can't have more than you have going out. So what our, we do our income, and we know that our income, if you look at it, it's up and it's up almost quite a bit. Sales tax is up near 500,000, a little over than that. But if you look at that bottom line where it says total, last year it was 7 billion, 48,506. This year it's 7 billion, 284,000. So we're up about 250,000 from last year. And we want to see that go up every year. We want to even see it get bigger. You know, that's my wish. So if you flip the page, what you see right below that, it said admin personnel in every department that, uh, represented our budget. It shows their personnel line item, and it also shows operation and management. So when you put it all together, those two figures have to be the same, or that is not a balanced budget. Then you have a new city manager somewhere down the line. Anyway, I do appreciate Mr. Bear, Ken, Joey for, uh, just being patient with it.
Got one question on, on this natural gas fee at heart. See, I still own this back years ago, that didn't.
That was a piece of, that was something we inherited.
Yes, sir.
When we bought that property, and from the, that well was already on that property. So they had an agreement to, uh, that they're going to continue to pay us the franchise fee from that little corner to go out to the park. You'll see that well, and that's what that is right there. I don't say they're real good, because I think they pay once a year, but they're supposed to be paying increase if we haven't received our, and it's not uncommon for them not to have paid it yet, but they do know to pay it. Some of these items that they, that are supposed to pay, maybe pay every half of the year or every quarter. And a lot of your numbers that you see will not be as accurate as they will be different by the end of the year. We've got two more months, I think, that before all of our income will be in for this, this.
So you don't owe no back pay. They paid up half the year now or something like that.
Do right now, I'd have to go back to them, probably don't pay. You see, look, it's on your financial statement. It'll show you, uh, on your, at the end of the year, I mean, at the end of the month, on your financial sheet. That has a line now, and it'll show you how much they pay, and how much they're supposed to pay, and what percentage they pay.
I think it hurts. May have to send them a letter to get them.
Yeah, I can, I can give you their number. I talked to them, they know me. But, uh, the, the next few items, uh, one of the great things is, on the next page, it says, that's the, that's the city office operations directors. And we paid off our reimbursement type of receipt when we borrowed the million. We paid our last payment this year. So that, that'll show it the very last time, we'll show a zero, but we didn't, we don't owe them a thing. You can just look through that, you'll see some changes. You'll see changes in the insurance, you'll see changes. The council was gracious enough to do a 4% to the employees. They're, they're very grateful.
Steve, I just want to add to that, uh, because the benefit of, if we gave them a 4%, we felt like that was pretty generous. Because on top of that, insurance is going up. But the city pays for the employee's insurance, so that was no extra cost to the employee, but it is an extra cost to the city.
Correct.
Uh, so.
It is an extra cost to employees if they have, if they have dependents, your children on insurance, her spouse.
Yeah, but as far as the employees, they get 100% insurance paid, because we pay part of the, the families and stuff. So we thought that that should be generous amount, considering that the insurance is going up also.
Ma'am, I can't complain, I thank you for the form. I wish that we'd taken the due form, really. I don't think the police department or any of my maintenance, the people I have to work, they could do, and they put out for the, for the people. And I think they did pay enough, but I think purchase has paid enough.
I mean, I mean, I'm a hazard figure. He's a lot better than when I was mayor.
But you can, if you look on the pages and the, of what last year's budget was, as to what had went up, like we see on my operations and management, last year it was 599. This year it's 696, so that's almost 100,000. And, uh, but on there is some improvements where we had some, some extra funds. And 100,000 of that is to do, just to do in addition to city hall. Uh, another 30,000, just going to go to another vehicle. So.
There is, I, I just found a typo in here, how I was on a police department budget line, another closing catch. And as well, I want to get this in here, this is huge. Uh, number photo three. Um, this year, uh, equipment is, I usually budget only 30,000, 50,000. But for 45,000 for equipment, um, there's $6,000 there. That's, that's pretty, uh, that either I made a mistake or, 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 but that's, that's just, that should be 45,000.
For equipment?
Yes, sir. Do that every year. That's number 33?
Yeah.
You know how much we actually spent, Dan?
Uh, no, not right now.
One thing we did do, Danny, and I guess it probably explained it to you, but you had a vehicle that was totaled or whatever, and insurance paid back. Those funds didn't actually go back into the police department.
Right.
And so we actually took and put, put those funds back to the police department to help offset the cost of.
That's awesome. That always gave me anxiety, you know, it always, we'd always make a note or something there, Susan, or we'd always make a note. You know, but Steve, it always gave me anxiety that, you know, I had to go buy a new, new car, a new police car. But, uh, the, I was, I was in the neighborhood.
Yeah, major budgets were bad, even though we took care of it.
Right, yes. Yeah, we were made whole, that's right.
That was one of the challenges.
That's a good, I'll stop there.
He gave us some money for some drawings this year.
We're going to start a drone project, yes, this, this time, we, we, that several times we needed it, broadside about.
We jumped right through the maintenance department, which is basically, we have $5,000 in the, in the abdomen. And we added more money to the, uh, street and drainage. That, that went up nearly 181, it was 300 things. We'll be able to do more road projects than we've been able to do than I can remember.
That was one of our thoughts or concerns is, we had some extra money. Felt like it deserved to go back to the, to the city, to the citizens. Uh, since they're the ones, it's, their sales taxes, what's helping this increase that's. Being able to put that back into the streets and hopefully get more, more streets down.
We've got a street problem that was already approved and passed. They told us when we, when they, when we met with, it's already signed and then ready to go. They said it to be around October the 1st before they can get to it. They're that far behind as it's up, so we've already got one already paid for, and it's ready to go. And then this right here, the money we have in this budget, I'll give it to Troy. And we'll, uh, address some more streets, going out for bits, I'd rather go ahead and get it, get on the expand. And, uh, smart the police department, I'll get with the chief and various supplies that, that I can, uh, make up that difference. And then I'll have, I'll just resubmit it through my committee. Or just submit it at the next meeting. If this, if this is approved. Your judges on the next page, is there anything y'all, y'all see that y'all talk about as we split, but I know.
Just need to point out to you that we really don't base this year's budget compared to last year's budget. And that's what we're looking at right here. You know, we should be looking at our expenses that we've actually paid out in order to arrive at a new budget, and that's what we've done. If you look at these sales tax receipts, for example, uh, that half a million dollars that Steve was commenting on a while ago, well, that's half a million dollars over to budget to budget. But, you know, we're not looking at budget, budget, we're looking at an actual dollar amount of close to 5.6 million uh, that we've received. So we're not really jumping out there in order to make everything work based on a budget. It's a real numbers.
And we, we've really grown, our city has grown. You all know how we run here, it's a council and the city itself. And so far, we're able to keep up and even do a little bit better. Uh, the next to the last page will be our, our judges. They always stay within their budget. I, I try to ask her to, indeed, you know, but if they did, they'll let me know. The library is on the next page. I can't say enough about the library, library. But, uh, she does real well, she has her own budget calendar at her desk, and she makes sure she's taking it right down to the business. I'm very proud of her for the work that Venn does. And the very last page is our rent center. Nutrition center. We've added a little forest or utilities this year. Not really sure how that's going to come.
Steve, were the two places that were renting in there, are we getting a monthly rental fee from them? Uh, for the rental, for the building they've rented? The, uh, chamber and the?
Yeah, uh, actually, Ken had asked us, but I didn't print off a whole lot, but it's, I need to provide with this little old sheet. Who's paid, when they paid, how much work we made, and, uh, I'll leave this, I'll have it on your desk at the next meeting. But, yeah, everybody's on time. We've got a couple coming up. And we have a, a couple of churches that have asked to just use it just a couple hours for like a Bible study, just one night a week. They weren't asking for no, nothing, they wanted to pay you. And I said, well, I really didn't have a problem with it, but I wanted to kind of, you know, throw to you guys and kind of give you your, your thoughts on it. I mean, we got seven, eight in a week, and if you rented that for two hours to an organization that you felt pretty confident you wouldn't have to have all the security out of the thing for, and they feed you.
So.
I'm glad you said something about that, because you, you told me about it previously, and I think it's a good idea. It's probably the best.
Well, I had some curios about it, and I think you really have to be careful about not being not rented to, I mean, not rented, you got to show no partiality there.
Don't, the, the main concern I have about is any long-term lease, where we think we might, I mean, no prohibition is leasing, but some kind of, uh, long-term lease, if you think there's some reason, uh, you might want to discontinue the lease for some reason. Because the legislature passed a statute a couple of sessions ago in response to COVID regulations. You recall during COVID, not us, but some governmental entities and municipalities were limiting the number of people who could attend a church service based on the spread of COVID. Like I say, it's normally in better cities, where they would say, okay, you have to be so many feet apart, uh, if you went to church services and that kind of thing. Well, the legislature passed a law saying no governmental entity could in any way uh, regulate or worship services. Trying to address that issue. Well, it can have unintended consequences because when a church goes to, say, a city or a school, it says, hey, we want to lease these premises, then, um, and you say yes, uh, you have to be very careful because. have to be very careful, because you can't regulate or do anything that would impact their worship services or their gathering without running afoul of that legislation that says, hey, governmental entity cannot interfere with, you know, even if it's a lease agreement or contractual agreement, you can't interfere as a governmental entity with any of their practices in terms of, you know, certainly not limiting the number of people, that type of thing. Now, that probably doesn't apply to the fire code, yeah. We had a thousand people show up, the fire code says we had two hundred people, well, I don't, you know, that's, that's a safety issue, but you just got to know that they're kind of, they're kind of a different type of tenant, any religious organization, any church, than a normal tenant. Couple hours a day, no, shouldn't be a big deal at all, but if you give some organization that says, hey, we'd like to lease your buildings on Sundays and Wednesdays, temporarily make this out of our church till we get a building built, now, you may have a whole lot of additional concerns, since they are a church, in terms of having what you can and cannot do with regard to that tenant landlord relationship, that make sense? So, you know, invite me to terms, in this case, I don't run a city, but I, you whatever.
Any more questions?
Later, I don't look at a good time or wait till announcements, at this point, and maybe you can attend it to announce it, I don't, I don't know. Most of you know that our longtime city attorney, before me, Ken Burrow, passed away this, I think it's past, in ninety-five, and I don't know how long he represented the city.
I do not know, we were looking for all the chickens.
Actually, Burrow, years ago, when I became city attorney, and then school attorney, which I don't know what's supposed to be, told me, but she says, well, Ken represented the city and school district for thirty-two years, can you do that? I said, no, man, I sure can't, so I don't know, but it's a long time, a long time.
Yeah, another thing, I, I think the family decided, they haven't decided on any thing yet, or, what if they told somebody, maybe in November, they may have a, a lawyer up there.
Yeah, they had, they had, I was on service on November the first.
November the first?
Yeah, Lawrence and, uh, working at the slow, I don't hear the phone, doing it first back to slow, I saw it yesterday.
Anybody here? We're all gathered, take that five minutes break.
Father, we come to, once again, Lord, we just want to thank you for allowing us to be here tonight, and Father, for blessing us with the city that, that has been prosperous and Lord, and something that we can be proud of, and Lord, I just pray that you'll just continue to work within our city, Lord, and I pray that we will be the light of only God. Father, thank you for these council members, Lord, that time to take good in, I just pray that you'll just continue to bless them and the employees of the government, Lord, I just thank you for, for everybody that puts in their time here, Father, we thank you for all the Jesus we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Man, scalpel, you believe so, Texas.
Yes, sir.
I'm a Texas.
Sue the attacks, one must take.
At regular city council meetings, we allow thirty minutes to hear citizens who desire to make comments to the council. They should sign up as they arrive, indicating the topic about which they wish to speak. Public participation is limited to citizen participation, and all other times, public shall not be in to discussion or debate being considered by the council. No presentation shall exceed five minutes, delegations of five or more shall point one person to speak. Please refrain from using names or titles of employees. If you have a complaint against a specific employee, you may file a complaint by using appropriate administrative procedure. The council is here to listen, get factual information, but they cannot discuss, deliberate, or make any decisions, not on tonight's agenda, thank you.
Mayor, I don't, we have to back him. Everybody needs to make any, now, from that little city business. Long, everybody got a copy of this minutes from August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five record meeting, opening that session.
Move to approve, Mayor.
Move to approve, Mayor.
Second.
Got a motion by Captain Bell, the second by. Captain Maniscalfo, this. We approve the minutes, August twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, record meeting. For these, the record, the legislation to be made at this time. Not all in favor of approving, approving the minutes at the minute, raise your hand. Under you, Ben, item number two, five, oh nine, one, one. Just about collected going in commission record, there's a very request submitted by Jason and Christian Willis. Could approach upon rear building and set back line within ten foot of property line. Fifty twenty. Eight hundred square feet. Property located at nine sixty six West Walton, Brownwood Place, Lot One, Lot Norden, down in Texas.
Make emergency subzone commission's recommendation.
Second.
Both of our, Captain Maniscalfo, I say, so, Captain Thomas. Proves on commission's recommendation. Okay, then. With Jason and Christian Willis. Give everyone a chance here, Bill.
Any more.
They've changed the property disposition of this. Government. Well, they agreed to prove it, now it's implement. To, uh, nine one one, that's where we.
Eight hundred square foot of building.
Yeah.
Yeah. That, that should be the written days plan zone, that's what they're.
Right.
Yeah, that's what says. Just grabs the vector out of.
Twenty four. That's just the agenda language. That's what, that's what the agenda language gives. Uh, because that was the original request. And, uh. Uh, the reason that, that items two and three is filled home there is because the group, the legislature has changed. Uh, what, I think September first of what is properly notice on the agenda. It used to, used to be seventy two hours, I mean, if we count on tens, I'm getting on longer to do that. So, uh, because of that, Darla has to post this early on. Uh, and it's, it's hard to eliminate. Agenda items from the planning zone, even though those two and three of us were withdrawn next to me. And the correction of the twenty four.
We just get all.
Yes, sir.
All right. How we got things right now, that is. All in favor, proving to, uh. It's all recommendation.
He goes.
We'll do this one. We'll vote you right in the jury.
Thank you for the line of end. That's question, that's petition, Christian and Christian Willis. Brownwood, Lake, Wellington, uh, Park, County, Texas. All in favor, raise your hand. Seven, no. Item number two, five, oh nine, one, four, discussing possible action, zoning commission recommendation, very request submitted by County Captain. For approval of minor flat in two driveways approaching on the side building setback line. Problem located at one twenty three Lotten Drive, Exeter, Lot Norden, down in Texas.
Mayor, move that we approve, that was.
Second. Go ahead, George.
Most of our captain, Wall, the second by Captain Shane, that we approved, uh, zoning commission recommendation to approve, the property located at one twenty three Lotten Drive. We will find a flat with two driveways approaching on the side mills and setback. Get more discussion on that. All over in favor, raise your hand. Item number two, five, oh nine, one, five, the possible action, zoning commission recommendation, very request submitted by. William, that's Alexis Smith to approach upon the rear building setback line to within five hundred. Construct a twelve or twenty four accessory building on ski. Problem located at sixty five, seventy six, two, Lot Norden Village, Lot Norden, down in Texas.
Mayor, move to approve.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Bell, the second by Councilman Maniscalfo. We approve the zoning commission recommendation for a very request of William and Alexis Smith to struggle. Approach upon the rear building setback line within five hundred five. Five, seventy five, two, Lot Norden Village, Lot Norden, down in Texas. Discussion on that, all over in favor, raise your hand. Hold up, hold. Item number two, five, oh nine, one, six, discussing possible action, zoning commission recommendation, very request submitted by David and. Due to policy to approach upon the east side building setback line to within two feet of, out to widen and extend their existing drive. And the property located at seven, six, fifteen, Clearview, Walkin Place, Lotten, Lot Norden, down in Texas. It's like they have that one question here, it says to approach upon the east side building setback line, within two further, five, two wide. Just. From the driveway or all the way.
It was two point nine.
Second.
Got a motion by Captain Shane, the second by Captain, Captain Paul, that we approve zoning commission recommendation, very request. David and Judith Paul, within two foot of property line to widen their existing drive. The problem located at seventy six, fifteen, Clearview Lane, Walkin Place, Lotten, Lot Norden, down in Texas. All in favor, raise your hand. Item number two, five, oh nine, one, seven, discussing possible action, five, open, environmental, raise your hand.
Good evening, Mayor, council.
Good evening.
I'm good to see y'all again.
Good to meet you.
I have to tell you one thing, since I've seen y'all last time in Buckville, my wife and I celebrate, celebrate fifty seven years. I'm a close foot old. She has been the garbage wife for that long, so, uh.
Well, hey, good afternoon.
Heck. Uh, I'd like to introduce, before I get started, Nathan Puro, who's the site manager here in the office there. And his boss, Steve Slater, he's the VP District fifty. They just, hello, both of them are retired military. Nathan is retired law enforcement also. Steve's been in the business for over twenty years after getting out of the military, so extremely disciplined. And they really grabbed the company here in this area, about the short hair. And that really brought it together, and I thank you, we did a pretty good job. Nathan's checking on here today, so, uh, that's good. Uh, we requesting a six percent increase by contract, we can look at CPI, which is the consumer price index of the US. Uh, Bureau of Labor Statistics, and it's the direct number they've used to measure the inflation. And for the last twelve months, it's up six percent. Uh, as good as that is, it's just what they risk. This is a direct cost, it has nothing to do with the product structure or employment, anything, it's just a direct cost. It's tires, some of the insurance, labor, costing equipment, landfill, it's a real problem. So, this is why we're requesting it. I have sent y'all in the past, a copy of the, uh, CPI, which shows a line item effort. Problem was trash collection, and you can see how it's gone up for the last year. And so, what we're requesting the six percent, because eighty six cents on a house residence. It's a little bit more commercial, in six percent, whatever the commercial rates. Uh, and this is my contract, that we asked for this, and, uh. It's a direct cost, it's something we try, need to try to recoup if we can. Our service has improved a thousand percent over the last year. I think that, uh, you know, this is a recent question again, it is a direct cost to us.
I think we're some passionate.
My first comment, I mean. First thing is, to me, fuel has gone down. Because in the past, y'all have come to us, had fuel, it's expensive, and you, you've asked for Indian crews for fuel. Fuel has gone down. And, um, also, as far as your service, I mean, I think the service has been pretty steady through the city right now. But you've also decreased manpower in the city. So therefore, that's some overhead that you don't have today, that you have in the past.
Well, just like you mentioned, why would that insurance have been playing? It's still paying twelve dollars an hour, now we have to pay twenty two dollars an hour, keep a good hand. About four hundred dollar tires, now seven hundred dollars. The two hundred forty dollar load in landfill is now four hundred fifty dollars a load. That's, if you look at all of the great, uh, CPIs, just every line item on here. You see line items like, uh, car and truck rental, that's the cost of renting. You see, uh, over the vehicle body works, that's the cost of getting your fender fixed. Look at, uh, airline fares, an airline ticket costs so much. You go to garbage and trash collection, you got insurance, you got landfills, you got tires, you got parts, you got labor. You got the fuel, which has gone down, but it's the only thing that's going down. Uh, our line item includes eight or ten, twelve links, but the other line items include one. So that's how company see it's, the, the increase. Uh, and, you know, that's horrible question, because it's strictly a direct cost.
I just think we're kind of, I mean, we went through a pretty rough patch there.
Yes, we did.
And, uh.
But that's been a year ago, I mean, we, we taking care of it, I suppose.
They've been through young.
Yes, kind of straightened that up pretty good.
Yes, they did, they done it very well.
Yes, yeah.
If you're that, a year ago, you're half, you're, you're sucking, but we've got it straight now, just like it's supposed to be.
Well, you're still having some problems.
I'm sorry.
You're still having some problems. Well, I'll take for this, my daughter was one, she found a trash, told me pick them all Friday. She called him, she goes, well, we, we, we're supposed to miss you, we didn't buy there, they finally picked it up today. And in that neighborhood, there's always at least one person in that neighborhood a week, he gets picked, no, get missed. Uh, which I understand that, but it's, it's, it's like me. When my guys mess up, okay, it may have been a year, I put them on a growth plan. They don't come to me and ask for raises until that, that growth plan is in at least a year. But we sell pipe, thousands of refineries, everything's gone up for us. My truck goes down, I don't get to raise my material pricing because of that. We do, that's stuff we gotta eat. And I go tell my customer, well, I got, I got an eighteen wheeler, I gotta buy a hundred sixty thousand dollar rig. I need to go up on you, they're gonna say, well, I'm gonna go down the road and buy it. I mean, that's part of doing business, the way I look at it.
Well, we pick up five thousand houses, we pick up about three hundred fifty commercial accounts a week. Uh, I actually bore commercial of that, because there's a lot of two, three, top, four top workers. Uh, when we miss a couple houses, I can't tell you why, and I told my chicken city, I won't find out why. But we still have got the expense of picking up five thousand stops, puts another three, four hundred commercial areas. Which, that costs a lot, you know, it costs money, and we do have problems, but we get them taken care of. That's what they're, is working for the company, they can take care of it. We need to know exactly what this happens, like your daughter, because we pick up garbage, that's what we do. We need to know if there's a problem. Uh, I can't answer you, but I will find that, I guarantee you.
My, my bill was so messed up, and you know how it was, she died, and yep, he lay back there and took care of it.
Yeah, yeah.
It was so screwed up for two years.
I know.
And finally, I got it fixed, and then they sent me another late notice, and when I walked into Craig, you knew, you're lady on the phone, sweet lady on the phone. And I go, laid pretty, pulled my bill payer account up, what you look for? I said, a lot of, oh my gosh, we have more trouble with them, that's what we was telling, said, it's about. Craig, well then, they, they got it straight again finally, and then I've been always wanting three or four weeks later to come pick my garbage cans. Now, they had it back to finish it off. But I got a long video taking my garbage, I said, what did they take my garbage?
You give me the money and I turn it in, I know exactly what you're talking about, so.
Well, that, that thing straightened out, they're not straightened out, they're, 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 the buildings, you know. I may have it straightened out now, I dealt with this for almost two years.
I can't tell you what happened, I, I don't know others than diabetes or people get it straightened out, because you.
It's not a good time to come, I, I'm not on the council, it's your result, but it's not really, your timing kind of is off for asking for a raise.
Well.
Bobby.
Excuse me, uh, I'm here just to address the services that I just heard about, okay? Uh. But darling, I can tell you, I come here every day, and if they have anyone that has called in a complaint. Before I leave this parking lot, that complaint is taken care of. Steve, you can contest to that also, right? I come here every day, and the ladies can tell y'all, before I leave the parking lot, I've taken care of the complaint. If I don't know about your daughter's complaint, it'll be counted Friday, she wouldn't have to wait up and tell today. Okay, so when I know about it, I take care of it. The same with, uh, the, the chief bill, and we found out about it, we got right up on it. The trash can issue, that was a, 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 a technical error or mistake, because he paid his bill. But what happened is accounting didn't take the recovery out of the, out of, out of the pool. So what we doing now, in which we have been working with all of your citizens that has bad debt or collections, okay? We recovered, we went and recovered the trash can because we had a work order to recover the trash can. But when he called, I looked into it, his bill was already paid up, we got the can back to him. I do the same thing with each and every one of your citizens that called. Because somebody may have lived there before that person, they moved away. They were the ones responsible for that bad debt, not the person that's living there now. So, if that happens, and they call us, it's recovered, back back to them that same day, this is not their fault. Now, we don't know this, because it's coming from corporate, from our headquarters, then giving us this information. So we just acting on what we have. But the minute we find out that that mistake was made, we, we rectify that stuff.
Catch it every day here in the city, I love that.
And we catch it every day. Yes, sir.
I met you in there.
Yes, sir.
You came in here in there. Last year in December or so, you're prepared, we signed a contract. We go along six months, and the bottom fell out. Stuff wasn't getting picked up, and things ain't been corrected in a year, Mr. Sonny. That man come in here in April, but we were fixing to kick y'all out, and you had thirty days. And I appreciate you coming here every day and taking care of the problems for the people, but that's, that's, that's not a true statement. That's not a true statement, you, things have not been corrected, it, it's just been four months ago. It's until the whole bottom fell out of the system, and you, y'all are fixing to be kicked out of the community. And I feel like at this point, I know everybody needs a raise, I understand that. But I just don't want the, the people in this community. Have, y'all are trusted, y'all. And at this point in time, three months later, you come in and ask for a six percent rate.
All right, sir. Well, I, I just wanted to explain to you guys, changes that I have directly, uh, affected with the community. When I told you I want to be a partner with you guys, that's what I meant, and that's what I'm doing. I'm here every day to grow our relationship and build a partnership, okay? You've never heard me complain or talk about past administration. I accepted the job the way it was. I accepted the job the way it was, my goal was to change it. And I want to thank you guys for giving me that opportunity to change it. No, are we one hundred percent where I would like to be? No, we're not. But my goal and my team's goal is to get there. To where I can walk in here one day, and y'all be like, y'all did, y'all nailed it. Okay? We still hitting that hammer, we still hitting there with the hammer. But eventually I want to drive that nail, that nail down. Okay? Just keep giving me the opportunity, and it's gonna happen. Okay? That every day, I, I work with my team. I like to agree.
Oh, stay right here, you made it there. On this rate increase, it rans you forward, give it up to fifteen dollars and sixteen cents. You don't think we're worth fifteen dollars and sixteen cents, that's correct, because we don't get fifteen dollars and sixteen cents. Y'all get two dollars and fifty cents of it. So our fifteen dollar one is all sitting down to thirteen dollars, because y'all get two and a half on it for each house each month. So. How much y'all making on us this year if you just hit the budget?
You shouldn't run that.
Well, I don't.
We, we did okay, but the year before we made a lot less, because everything was a problem. Since Nathan come on, I still got an office for.
We're still talking two, three hundred thousand dollars on us. That's what we're paying the city. Because we're paying her two, two, not, not, hundred and seventy eight value. It's two fifty a house per month, and there's five thousand houses. So that's how much we're making off of us. We don't get the full fifteen, sixteen, we, we, not two dollars fifty cents off of us, and that's what we get. Now, what Steve was talking about then, with that franchise fee on the money that we collect, there's five thousand houses approximately in town, they're built on quarter basis, eleven, seven, three, every month, it's supposed to be a third of the houses paid. They don't, sometimes half of them pay, sometimes a tenth of them pay, sometimes a quarter pays. But the money that we get is the money that we pay Steve franchise fee. So it goes like this, it's never the same, because it's the way we get our money. So, but we still paying a lot of money to the city for franchise fee.
I understand that, but the last time y'all were here, we had, we had another government service here ready to take over. I mean, we can make the same deal with them, so I mean, that's kind of not really an argument, you know, on that part. So, I mean, I do appreciate you, sir, I really do, you've come and done excellent with the city and everything. But I mean, I, like Joey said, it's only been four or five months and we had all these problems. And the citizens put us in there, voted for us, we go to tell them, hey, y'all got a garbage increase right now. Wouldn't be a real good thing to them. We gotta look out for their interest, they put us here. I mean, few months down the road, it may be one of those, but right now, I, I can't, I mean, you might, you might get it, but I can't vote for it tonight.
Last year we got a rate increase, I forget what it was, five percent, whatever it was. But the company for some reason, some great financial wizard said, we want to go all digital, so we're gonna charge five bucks a piece. It would nail the industry to everybody. And we came off of that, I got, I told them that we can't do that, we, we knocked it off correct. We knocked it five dollars, I'm sure it's our part, so, I mean, we're doing everything that we possibly can. And we just, like I said, we're still picking up five thousand houses, which is a direct cost. Still making three, four hundred commercial accounts, which is a direct cost, anyway, we're just replacing the, so. We're still picking up the loggers and all of these types of problems. On rest. That's it. I appreciate anything y'all do, thanks, and we're still gonna continue to be here and get after it, so.
You got a heart, man.
Doing a good job.
I'll be here for you, okay? All right.
Oh, you shouldn't come by early, ladies, it's about too early to come out, I heard it, put her dog, we're getting out.
Who's one?
So Mayor, how, how much longer we have on this contract?
People here, isn't it?
Two or three.
Mayor, I believe that we decline this rate increase at this point. Uh, maybe we revisit it next year. Uh, but at this point, I just feel like, I just hate to put this extra cost on, on the city at this point.
Second, the motion.
A motion by Councilman Wall, and a second by Councilman Man of Scout Cole, that they deny the rate increase, is that right?
Yes.
Keep me, I have Scott inside. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. Six to one.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Item number two, five, oh nine, one eight, discussing possible action operating budget fifth of the year, twenty twenty five, twenty six.
Mayor, we approve the budgets. As presented with the exception of the amount that needs to be amended in the police department. Uh, I'm not sure where.
Line item hundred thirty three.
Yes, I'm not sure where we'll pull that, those funds from, Bill.
I, I mean, I don't know where it's gonna come from. I can have it changed maybe tomorrow, but it'll be ready after next meeting.
Mayor, second to my. A motion by Councilman Wall, and a second by Councilman Chan that we approve the operating budget with some additional legal enforcement. More discussion on that. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed. So there, you got it like that, that's what?
Uh, no.
You got it like that?
No, it's not, it's not.
Got you, the department report you're there, if you want to look at those.
I will think of the hard bits out of the park. We're about to finish our third pick and pop course, they're gonna be putting in a, I might have said this last meeting, a an exercise station for elderly. So that you don't have to run, you can walk, and you got steps and stairways. It's, uh, we could have got a granite court, which was a hundred fifty thousand, forgot it boiled out. A lot lot less than fifty.
Is it gonna be air conditioned?
Yeah.
Have you got hand rub?
Yeah.
I don't know who, who defines elderly. At what point am I elderly?
I think he'll know.
I think I hear.
Me and the mayor are better anyway.